We're gonna file this meeting notice.
Thank you.
Item number three is recognized gift. I'd like to thank everybody for being here once again. Sign their sheets going around. Item number four is new business. This is the time if anybody wants us.
I do want to remind everybody at one o'clock in the O S U's meeting room, we have health toys coming today. So, but anyone who wants to come in and listen.
One o'clock today.
One o'clock today, yes. So, I went Thursday and Friday last week to a quarterly Adco safety seminar. It was very interesting. I got with Aaron early this morning, went over it with him. So, we're gonna make plans on a few things. I will have it typed up to give to the other two commissioners. Things that we need to kind of work on that they brought up. The afternoon meeting on, I mean, the morning meeting on Friday was very interesting. It gave a lot more detail on what we need to be doing. So, I will sit down with everyone if they have any questions. On y'all's handbook that y'all have your S D A book, do y'all have your chemicals in your book?
The M S.
That you had in the M S D S book?
The M S D S book, remember that wasn't supposed to be at the very front of the M S D S book.
I have one that I think that may need to be updated.
Yeah.
Okay. Are those updated? And then if you make a list of everything, you can go on and copy that off for each chemical.
Yeah.
Item in case there is a spill or something that happens. If your secretaries do not know how to do that, if they will get with Teresa. If they want to come down, she can show them how to log on and get it done. That's one thing that they're really looking at real hard. So, she'd be, I haven't told her yet, but she will help get it started. She finished ours up last week on the outside and the inside of the building. So, I do have another company that is interested from the transfer station. I did leave her a message. She has not got back with me. So, I'm just kind of waiting on the D A to give that letter back. And I'm hoping, since she's here today, that, I told Michelle last Friday, that if we could get that one going, we can kind of see where we're at to get that, get it taken care of by maybe by the first.
So, this is three parties that are interested?
Yes, we have three that are interested. So, we'll just kind of go and kind of play that by ear and let y'all know as much information as I get it. We are in need of a hot water heater at the jail. Got one for five thousand eight forty-nine ninety-five. No shipping cost. Didn't know what everyone thinks about trying to get one because if the other one quits, we're in trouble.
We've got, we've got two great big ones out there.
Yes.
If you haven't seen, we've got two great big ones out there. Right now, one is doing the work of two and has been for a little while. We've got one pilot that just doesn't get hot water. They just don't, they just don't get it. But these are big, big.
They're hundred gallons.
Yeah.
They're fast recovery, they have two hundred thousand.
Yes.
Burn it.
Yeah. But we've got, one of them's down, has been for a little while.
Is it? Is it because of the circulation problem or is it?
I don't know, but it's been.
Or is it making hot water?
Yeah, well, it's not making any hot water.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's not making any hot water. It's throwing an air code and I don't know where the manual is for it to see what air code it's throwing. But these are big. At the time they were put in, they were stating, well, I'm not gonna say it was stated, but it was a big digital controlled hot water heater at the time.
It shut off by the pump.
Yeah.
It was a leak.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's got a whole.
Okay, okay.
Pretty much turned off.
Okay.
If one quits, we're gonna be in trouble where we have no hot water. And then, then we gotta make a drastic decision on what we're gonna do. I can get the ball rolling, get this one here if it's okay with everyone.
What are you gonna take it out of?
If Timmy was here, I mean, I'm sure he'd have some insight on it.
Yeah.
It's not, not here today.
Well, I used to say the general, but I don't think of the worst that's come out of right now.
I don't either. We had thirty thousand dollars coming from inmates.
Yeah.
I don't know who's gonna get that. But you take that right there, then you take another eleven, that's another seventeen thousand dollars that we're out there in the fund for a jail.
That other hot, what are you gonna go and say?
I agree we have to have it.
If we're working harder, then we're gonna be in a shape where they have no one.
I know we have to buy it. Not arguing that. I'm just saying that's.
I understand.
I didn't ask, hoping we can take out of that thirty thousand.
Well, and I will give with ten.
Because we're also gonna have to make payroll out of the general fund for the jail. So, hey, you know, you're talking, you're bumping up there to forty, forty-five thousand dollars. And we have, what, a two hundred thousand dollar carryover? I mean, you're, you're done for.
I understand. I'll tell you what I'll do.
But I'm hoping we can use that thirty thousand.
I'll give with Mona and ten.
And ask them that.
Today. I will ask them today. I'll go out and see her.
It's time we make the paper anyway.
I understand. It's just, no time's a good time.
That's true enough, Sandra.
We're still working on, I'll talk about the jail. We're still working on the security company coming out, working our phones, putting the parts in. They're getting parts in, working on it as they go. They're making some progress. It's just getting them, because they take care of like thirty other jails as well as ours. And so, they, they've been called out every day that they've come on emergency situations, working on other jails. So, they're still working on that. The gentleman, the adjuster did call me and said they're, they're gonna get the first installment of money coming in, which is gonna be just right around nine thousand dollars. Cut the check to the county. And we got disconnected and I didn't get a chance to call him back. Didn't say what fund or how that was gonna be marked, but he said they're gonna get that sent to the county. I've got the exact figure in my office. I don't have that in front of me right now, but it's right around nine thousand dollars when we come into the county. And that's all towards, all the repairs that have to be paid to this company, Matlock Security, that is.
That's a partial, Aaron?
Coming in, sir.
Nine thousand's a partial payment?
It's, it's, right now, it's a partial, yeah. It's their first estimate as to what we can do to try to see if we can get the systems operating again where they need to be. It's just the first step along the way. And again, I reiterated to them and they were understanding, like, we're just trying to replace parts and see if that will take care of it. And if that doesn't, we'll just keep on going, keep on pushing and keep digging into it. Nothing's gonna keep us from fixing the whole problem if it's bigger than what their first initial estimates are gonna be. So, this week, as far as what we've got going, we've got the, I'm gonna bring the inmates up and we're gonna be moving things around, moving the ceiling up in the courthouse. For getting ready for the H B A C, make room for them. Last week, we worked on, we hit City Lake Road. And you have to forgive me for the Catholicist County, East County Road twelve nineteen, that intersection. We worked east all the way to where you turn to go to crossroads, picked up that whole road, right there. I mean, furniture, bed springs, we had all kinds of stuff. We ended up with two trailer loads worth of trash being picked up. And I, I had people stopping and just really bragging about the efforts and, and things. And we, we worked them two days down there. Four inmates worked them all day down there. Put in, well, I say all day, it was a seven hour day that they put in four inmates down there. As far as the safety meeting goes, what Sandra, I'll kind of jump onto what Sandra had said. There's just a lot of things that the Department of Labor is tackling right now while they're in the mode of changing. Since they are having to change some things, they don't want OSHA to come in and run things. They want the Department of Labor, State Department of Labor to run things. And so, there's some things coming down the pipe that we're gonna have to change how we're doing things. Even that, even as far as the way we park our vehicles. I mean, that's when I have to, we're gonna be addressing that and ground guiding and backing into spots and things of that nature. There's just some things. And that's gonna go into our safety handbook that I am working on right now, an amended safety handbook about going away in the operations. And I'm still working on all those, kind of what I told you last week. I showed Sandra what I had done with some of our safety, our written protocols. I showed Sandra one of my first drafts of that. It isn't OSHA. I just had to fill in the blank, put in where, you know, who's the supervisor and, and it's gonna be assigned to each district commissioner and district arm. That's getting done. I've been working on that as well as, I built a whole new safety handbook, not just an employee handbook, but a whole new safety handbook. That's gonna be a big change. And then drug testing is gonna be a whole new big change. Like, they're really pushing drug testing now as well. Traffic backing up and drug testing on pretty regular intervals. So, yes, sir.
Are they, are they gonna, excuse me, start drug testing people at the courthouse? Just people?
It's everybody that's county.
Anybody's county.
Mm-hmm, anybody that's county, yeah. Yeah, it's gonna, there's gonna, you're gonna start seeing a lot more random and you're gonna see a lot more right after incidents or accidents occur, doesn't matter what it is.
I thought they always have to do that.
Well, we haven't been. And, and that's, that's one of the problems that we've identified. Whenever they said, we put, you know, we're gonna start checking that, we haven't been doing that. And so, we're gonna have to change that. Also, with our safety coordination meetings, our safety meetings that we were supposed to have every month with our safety team, I really need the commissioners' backing in this with getting our safety teams, getting this rocking and rolling. We have a quarterly safety that everybody has to come to, but we have a designated safety team for the county. We have to start doing that because that's one of the things that they can gig us on. That's one of the things they can look back on our records. And if we haven't been doing this and people aren't showing up, even if we have stated ones and people aren't showing up, they're gonna start gigging us on that. That's another one of the things. So, I really need the commissioners' backing on that, reemphasize to people, not just with your people that might be assigned to the safety, but individuals in the courthouse. We have to start, and people have to start coming to that. We've missed our October one. I'll take part of the blame on that. That was our quarterly. We are gonna make that quarterly up second week of November. That's gonna be our quarterly. But we have to, have to, have to start emphasizing our monthly safety committee meeting. It has to be done. It normally takes, it's less, it's generally less than an hour. It's about a thirty minute meeting at the end of the day that it can be took care of. So, that, these are, these are things that just, the Department of Labor is saying, you're gonna have to start working on. These are your deficiencies that they pointed out to us that we're gonna have to start working on. And as far as the deficiencies go, that Mauney came in and pointed out to us, and I believe he emphasized to everybody on the specific sites. As long as we get our deficiencies fixed before his official write-up happens, it's not even gonna go on his official write-up. So, I'm gonna be coming down to each site and seeing what has been fixed and what hasn't been fixed and starting trying to get that stuff knocked out as quick as possible that way. And, and he even said, and you guys know, we're actually pretty good. He's seen a lot of areas in a lot worse conditions and we're pretty good. So, all we're doing is just getting those loose strings tied in. That way, we, we stay good. So, there's just some bigger things as in, you know, some of the safety protocols we've gotta start implementing. You guys got any questions for me?
Or anything there on FEMA?
Yeah, I had a new guy, which I didn't realize it was gonna be like this. But we've, I've had four different guys with our specific thing with FEMA. I've had four different guys that I've, I have been talking to. They just keep rotating new people through. The first time, you know, we lost people was because of the hurricanes. The second time was because, again, of the hurricanes and all the natural disasters that are going through. They keep pushing people away from us and down there to the massive recovery efforts that are going on in all these different areas. And so, we keep getting new individuals that keep being brought in. And so, trying to get them brought up to speed with what we've already done, we're having to resubmit things. And I asked, you know, they keep asking for additional things. So, there's just kind of been a, it's just a process, I guess, that we're gonna have to go through in order to get it all done. They've got a new guy per category now. And so, but they keep, these new people keep coming out of Tennessee that they keep bringing in. And they're basically volunteers that are helping do all this. And so, it's just a, it's a process. And they haven't guaranteed anything as far as timeline goes for us. They just keep asking me for more stuff and I keep giving it to them. So, it's, I'm doing what I can to get them to push through and get it done. And that's it with FEMA as far as I know. I know they're still working with some of the applicants, trying to get with the kind of public schools, trying to get them done. And I'm gonna have to get a employee pay handbook on how we do comp time or overtime. I had to submit. That was told to me Thursday. I've gotta get a handbook on how we do comp time and, and overtime, how we compensate on that in order for their compensation from FEMA to come in. Boss, they were saying, I had some questions about the hot water heater.
You got anything for us, Ken?
Yeah, we got, we've been, they've been busy this weekend. Call after call, call while it's not going down, it's continuing to get higher and higher. Jail count was at sixty-four. Twenty-two's at court today. So, our numbers are staying the same, they're not going down. I know Randy found a hot water tank. Katrina said for about fifty-five hundred, wasn't Randy?
Fifty.
Fifty-eight, fifty. That's something we need to look at, probably getting. If the other one goes down without hot water. So, whatever the commissioners thinks we need to do on that, we'll get it done.
People wondering on your thirty thousand that you'll be getting in, you know, when, when that's coming in?
We don't, it just drops. But I, and, and we can use that, when we use that. Understand that's, that's how we usually operate with food and pay the bills out there too, so.
That, that was brought up.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna get with Mona and you today. If you have time to go over some stuff and see what we can do.
Okay, that's fine. But we just, that, the thirty thousand that will be, that will be coming in is how we normally survive, four or five months on bills. So, one way or another, we, we'll get it done.
We'll look at it as well.
They're just looking at the eleven thousand it took to make the payment plus another six thousand for the hot water heater. It's hitting it pretty hard.
And then payroll.
Oh, I understand. I, I understand, so. And that, like I said, that money, we don't know when it drops. Whenever the state crosses it through. I know Mona sent it almost a week and a half ago. So, I would say.
What's normal timeline?
It can take two to four weeks, Paul. So, and, and I know we've got another six or eight, you know, that could go at any time. So, that's more money. I think normally we bring in, you know, sixty to seventy thousand a year from D L C. Other than that, everything's good our way.
Any other new business? If not, we're gonna move on to item number five, approved commissioners' decisions from previous meeting. I'm gonna make that motion.
One second.
Yes.
Same plan? Yes.
Item number six is approved blanket P O's for this week. We have. Ninety-six hundred, Estegel Stone. Eighteen hundred dollars for performance food. Thousand dollars for fleet board. And those will be the three blanket P O's for this week.
Make a motion for approval.
Park prepared?
Yes.
Same plan?
All story.
Yes.
What was eighteen hundred dollars on Paul?
Performance foods.
Thousand would be fleet board.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Eighteen hundred would be performance foods.
Yeah. We get eighteen hundred about every week for performance foods.
Yeah, and we only spend, you know, thirteen to fourteen hundred.
Well, yeah.
But it comes back.
It kind of rotates back, but that's about a weekly deal. Item number seven will be discussed, considered approving September monthly reports for election board, assessor, treasurer, county clerk's office. Item number eight will be discussed, considered same resolution as transfer money from general account into the gross revenue capital improvement by eleven thousand two oh two thirty-five for October two thousand seventeen. Mom paying for Heskey County Public Facility Authority. Yes.
No, no one ever?
Yes, I do, yeah.
Sorry about that.
Item number nine will be approved invoice. Project invoice. Let's get all these numbers on P V Road, find it by the top.
We got three invoices that need to be paid, two of them, a few more. But invoice is over, just two person we have them pay by top toes.
So, you have three then?
No, they're all three.
Okay.
They're all together.
Okay.
Like a motion?
All set, okay.
S D A? Yes. All story?
Yes. All right, item number ten, discussed, considered to accept or reject proposed amendments for bylaws of Adco. And that's our sixth F. And there'll be our insurance bylaws that. We've all three got a chance to look over. And I've talked to the people on the board, that's all we six F. They're all fully, have a lot of confidence in what they did and what I, from what I've read. It looks okay to me, Sandra, do you?
And you will represent in the next week's meeting?
Yes. So, I'm gonna make a motion to approve this.
One second.
All story?
Yes.
Same plan?
So, item number eleven, signed the transfer checks, C D O's.
Coffee?
Yeah.
You got some?
Yeah, I made it to everybody. Everybody needs to get them a cup of coffee.
Yeah, I made it.
Now, Randy, I, that's just a make it.
Well, that's a little different, you make it and her make it.
Same as. My idea, Jim, boss. No, I don't drink coffee. Actually, it's your idea, boss. Well, I had done it for three weeks, I don't show up. Can't drink a little coffee.
I can't even drink with you because you ain't drinking none.
I drink it, but I don't like it. But I make sure it's made differently. I'm not so pretty set up.
I love the smell it, but I just don't get it.
Sandra wants a coffee.
I'm already done.
These are called for dragger days if they just drop. I'd be a little pop.
I didn't know if anybody had spoken about it.
Yeah, we'll get it.
Smells good, but I just.
So, let her sit. And now.
Every now and then, yeah.
Put down back much away with his heart.
See, they're hollering a little bit, I got her in Kyoto.
Okay.
And then when I get back from Kyoto, I'll be off.
Yeah. We're trying to get it now. We got off just three. I got a bunch of them piled up before I got off thirty-one highway. Yeah, I think they've got. You have to know, uh.
That specified as rat.
You could think, I put a little over there.
Especially if you got some good talent. You surprise the road a little, right?
Ironically, that's all the same plans, well, just see a little over there, like there, see where that.
I mean, I've seen people shit it down, you know, it's like two inches thick and then pray.
That's the key, you gotta be, you gotta get it at least. Would we just move the benches and taking the ceiling down?
Me and Randy and Sam and Jerry.
How many bags, just a little better racks for putting them.
Well, we're, we're looking.
Reasonable, we're still trying to find something to state.
Yeah.
When you get through something to state, we can only pretend something.
And they didn't have any.
What are you wanting?
Shelves.
Shelves.
Heavy duty shelving, or lightweight pallets.
Will you come out to the office? Give it, make sure this afternoon we'll give it Mike, we have a way to order off the military's website. And let's get on there and look and see if they got anything on there.
That'd be good, we could get those, clean our office out, get that back upstairs.
And it's, it's shelving, it's heavy duty shelving. How many you need?
Oh, about a hundred sections. Eight, wasn't it, six, where's item number six, seven, I don't know. Now get that option deal, everyone's way up, it's far away. That's what anybody meant from state of Oklahoma is it's gonna be in Oklahoma. I looked at some yesterday online, it was northern Nebraska.
Just a long ways to go get them.
Did anybody show you that, since you were that heartbrush door selling it for your water? Oxygen, yeah. Oh, yes, you did, not electric, fire and stuff, yeah. She didn't show me three minutes, I didn't get a trail. That's like, I don't know, when she gets you off your fire, she puts you in your file.
Saturday, I want this one, this is the last. That's good, huh?
See you, love you.
I hope I go down to the same citizens, I could probably find somebody play a little big fans, they threw that there.
I was trying to find, I wish you didn't come back.
You didn't miss nothing.
Oh, I didn't bring it in.
Okay, we need raw, both of the doors.
Okay, because you'll go. You were my truck, my trucks parked over here, unlock my truck, just lock that, uh, right there, my console, right there. Yes, just come here, okay.
Oh, we got a call from Doug, no?
Doug never called, man.
He didn't call you? Okay, he just got back.
I've got a lot of calls.
He, him and my brother, my brother-in-law, one too.
He probably told, uh, for Brandon, you both hung.
Yeah, yeah.
He didn't have a question, did he?
Didn't have a question about that.
I know, I'm gonna send him, I'm gonna go there and do him.
Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies. Yeah, I just, I'm a little.
I'll just go there and do it, yeah, I'll get over there and do it, I just.
It's all right, Sandra. I was wrong once myself, man, I thought I was wrong.
I'll tell you.
Yeah.
You were wrong once?
Because I thought I was, thinking I was wrong. No, I make a lot of mistakes each day.
A kid went at the EMS.
I saw, I mean, I don't think it'd be, I don't think it'd be a problem.
He said during, between now and the empty first year, he said it's, it's time to, but they haven't got his building ready.
He's gonna send us some, he's not, we've not hired him, not, we haven't spent a penny, but he is gonna send us some. Quotes on whatever it costs, and then you can look at it from there.
So what did you get Mike in the two year?
Nothing's on paper.
I know, but.
But I'm working on it, once I get it, get this from Kim, the architect, I'm gonna give it to Clark, because he's the chairman, let him look at it. With Mike's professional opinion. There's no way we can tear that down and build a new one, for what we can rehab up and for it, that was his opinion, that, who's mine, but it's.
Because Jerry won't be able to cut deals.
They won't?
His brother probably, he won't be able to, um, break one.
I don't. You took, I believe he can, I mean, I don't know, but his brother can.
Yeah, his brother can, but he won't be able to.
Besides, he'd be subcontracted down in Lake Forest. He'd be a subcontractor anyway, yeah, I mean, e- even if it goes through, I mean.
Yeah.
As soon as I get that, Clark, I'm gonna give it to you, and y'all can look it over, see what you think. But regardless, we're gonna have to have a. We're gonna have to have a set of plans, whether we build a new one or rehab that one, but. I mean, there's no way we could, it's too complicated to bid on that one. Or it would be for me.
Nobody could bid on it.
He bid on it, so you had something.
In rattling.
Right.
Item number eleven, we need a motion.
I make a motion. Yes.
Yes. Item number twelve is still adjourned, and I'm gonna make that motion.